The order. I don't have a problem doing it, but if you guys want to skip the time of doing it. Just make one more thing now.
That'd be the True, True North and K L J and Close Destruction.
Yes.
I think you put it in minutes a while back, a few years ago.
They all had months, a week, a month.
Change that.
Sometimes there used to be a lot of them, but now I'm like, ah.
Motion to approve bills.
Second.
Move consecutive debate bills. Go ahead, please.
Brown. Bullock.
Aye.
Hifan.
Aye.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Britt.
Aye.
Financial report. Any other questions on financials?
Usual accounts.
Second. Quick questions for discussion. Do you happen to know on hand how much money we approved into that forever? I know we approved here basically what all of our overhead. I was just curious to know how much is done. I think last I looked. Why did we move over a million? So you get. And they, um, they had only, they had only invested, I think forty or fifty percent of it at that time. Which actually is kind of a good thing because it means that they're looking for better things to invest in. They just sort of throw it all in the first thing they saw. But you never said that. Over time, there's kind of a lot of curiosity to know if it was all in market yet. But that's fine.
Motion. We have a young motion. Yeah, thank you. Roll call, please.
Bullock.
Aye.
Hifan.
Aye.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Britt.
Aye. Financial group. Congratulations. Motion in second to approve. Check, 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 yeah, call please.
Hifan.
Aye.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Bullock.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Britt.
Five. additions or corrections to the agenda?
Make the motion to approve the agenda.
Motion in a second to approve the agenda. As printed. All those in favor, sing about the same eye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. First up, Sarah. Section.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, just wanted to give you a little update on our A and R opening. A and natural resources. Uh, so that will close on September twentieth. So if you know of anybody that is, um, that would like to apply, send them our way. We are taking any, um, many, or you know, as many applications as possible. We'd like to have a really good amount of candidates. Uh, screening will start right after September twentieth. So hopefully we can get somebody rolling in that position in the near future. We have been receiving a lot of calls pertaining to agriculture. Um, so thankfully we've got a lot of surrounding agents that we've been, uh, having them field the calls or visiting farms or, or whatnot. So it's been, uh, really helpful to have them, uh, helping us. Uh, we have the start of the new four H year starts in September. Uh, with that tomorrow, we are going to be having a family fun night. So, and that is open to anybody that's interested in four H and then, um, all of our, uh, foragers that we do have. Uh, we are going to be having a, a lot of fun. We're having the four H Olympics. So stop by if you, uh, uh, want to see what we're up to. We're going to be starting at four o'clock with a, uh, community, uh, service project. And we'll have some fun and then we'll end with our awards for the previous year. We did do a needs assessment of our foragers so that, uh, we can help. That really helped to plan the upcoming year, uh, so we could kind of settle on dates for achievement days and things like that. Uh, we are going to be having a four H float at the homecoming parade this weekend. Uh, so if you're at the parade, uh, support our foragers. And we're doing a little fundraiser with the fall festival with that. And we have a ton of resources on hand on food preservation, canning, freezing, drying. We've shared a lot of our resources with the Hope Center. They're getting a lot of produce from, um, area producers and gardeners. So we can help, uh, help those families utilize those fruits and vegetables more. More and yeah, so that's kind of what we're up to. Anybody have any questions for us?
Anybody?
Sounds really great to me.
Excellent. September twentieth.
September twentieth is the day, so hopefully we'll, we'll have a good pool of candidates. Got a lot of questions, so.
Out of curiosity, did you find anything surprising for your needs assessment or was it?
Actually. Nothing too surprising, but, uh, our family gave us a lot of good ideas. So, um, on like little, um, mini camps that they'd like to do, uh, achievement days are going to be very similar to what we did this past year. That's just what they wanted. Uh, so I was kind of surprised with that. Uh, but really nothing. But I'm glad he did it, so it's good to, it's good to do. Got about thirty candidates through the survey, so that was good.
Anything else for Sarah? Thank you so much.
Great, thank you. You're serious, sir.
Jeff Upmeyer, recorder. Yeah, I'm kind of folks.
Good morning. Good morning. I'll give you a little background on what I'm requesting. Uh, we had some, they're called birth lancers. There are books in our office from the county that estimate information about births throughout the county from back in the early thirties, I believe it is, up until the eighties. They're not actual birth certificates, but they're, they have information on their birth within the county. A gentleman called requesting information out of it. Something to do with birth records. I'm kind of wary on giving any of that information out because it is part of the vital statistics. So I called the Bismarck Vital Statistics Office. We cannot give that information out, being absolutely informed that that information actually shouldn't even be here. They said that the books either have to be destroyed or archived. That's not open records. Um, so I did contact the, um, director of the state archives. They will accept the books if we want to transfer them to them. So there is some fee to put the books in the archives. Other than that, they would have to be destroyed. I have a hard time destroying births like that. So if I have your permission, I can set it up with the state archive. I can take them down and we'll go down in October and maybe we'll archive the books.
That way people that, if one of them wants to steal some of the information.
They would have to go through the state archive and they know what information has to be completely eliminated off of those records. Um, according to the vital statistics office, pretty much every office has already destroyed them or submitted them to the archives.
Every county was either destroyed?
Either destroyed them or sent them to the archives. They are not open records. So they shouldn't be in an open record area after I spoke to the vital statistics office. I pulled them out of the area that the public has access to.
I guess if you mind my preference that they be archived, it looks wrong to destroy records like that.
Well, if you don't have to. My thinking is why would you archive them? Because that way if it isn't proper, it wouldn't work to go and look at what they need to have. Through the state, you're doing the proper chain anyway to look at what you're looking at. I'm looking.
Yeah.
Would you like a motion that we?
I would prefer a motion.
I would like, uh, I'll make a motion that we, uh, allow them to, uh, art, uh, send our books to be archived. We'll be serious.
So. Give it a go.
Then we will be seconded then we, uh, have our archived books, uh, sent down to the office of vital statistics.
You know, it's actually the state archive.
State archives?
Yes.
Are they going to build another building for all this?
I have no idea.
You say where are the state archives? I live in the state library.
It's with the state historical society.
So you filming?
Yeah. I think I'm going in the basement. I don't understand why they don't.
I'm glad they care.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, if you would keep record.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, sing about the same eye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. Thank you so much for that. Can you give a trailer to hold on or?
It's actually three good sized blocks. I can give them my deal.
Thank you.
So thank you. Kevin.
All right. So I got, we don't have any projects, I don't have any projects to update you on. So, uh, our meeting was secondary roads of Bismarck Commission Convention. Be October fourth, Tuesday at ten fifteen. So we need to review that, uh, county central aid program sheet. I don't see any, uh, changes or corrections that we need to make to it. The only thing is if we add our two thousand twenty-four project, that'd be the last thing. And we could wait a year for that if we wanted to. So I guess my recommendation would just be the scientific way to. We have to present that, uh, federal aid meeting, secondary road gate. This includes the current year projects. It includes the paving on South Hampton. And includes the bridge, south bridge. This one, the current one, that is.
I'll make a motion to chairman.
Second. Motion in a second that, uh, go ahead and sign the, is it the secondary roads? Early, early. Needing secondary roads in Bismarck. Right. Any further discussion on that? If not, all in favor, sing about the same eye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, next, I got some quotes, two quotes for chips for next year. Gown construction quarter to seventy dollars a ton. Strata quarter to seventeen sixty a ton. And that price is delivered as double as like, then we'll move them from there. And we need twenty-eight hundred tons, I think my note on there again, it says two thousand. It's twenty-eight hundred tons for a cost of forty-seven thousand six hundred. So motion, go ahead and get those ordered.
Is there any reason you can see why we wouldn't take the low bid?
Uh, yeah, the low bid was down, we had down, we had down last year, so we're happy with what they do. Happy with their products.
Make the motion, accept the low bid on chip seal.
Motion in a second to go ahead and approve the low bid on chip seal. Further discussion? Commissioner Drummond, do you have anything?
No, I'm good.
All those in favor, sing about the same eye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries.
When I put specs together last year, when we took bids for motor graders, it was starting in October with, but with, uh, delays in the steel and microchips and everything else. I started a month earlier this year, so I think we sent everybody a copy of the good specs. They're exactly the same as last year, except for, you know, a few bits of them, like they gotta be new. New machines, not, not like last year was twenty-one machines. So any questions on those specs?
Kevin, what's, uh, how old are our existing machines ever trading out?
They'll be seven years old, one subgrade is old, uh, twenty-fifteen. Yeah, twenty-fifteen. It'll take, take the numbers to twenty-two. Our warranty will run out in, uh, March of twenty-two on those old ones.
That's what you expect delivering, Mark?
No, April first.
So then the warranty would be the same on these new ones?
Well, uh, depends on what, uh, our cats are, eight thousand hours and that's what we're, they're not needed as eight thousand. At the time, John Deere was only doing seventy-five hundred, but now on this new bid, John Deere will do eight thousand hours. So then our warranty goes as eight thousand dollars. That is as long as they'll run. We pay for warranty, of course.
They still structured with the guaranteed buyback and all that stuff?
Yep.
My only question was just out of curiosity was, when we had the, uh, the bid opening last year, we had problems with, you know, John, you're not being the right one or whatever, so are we going to get ourselves into that again where they're going to be not happy with us because?
Possible.
They did their own.
Weight spec, you know, yeah. Weight and horsepower.
They weighed horsepower. And the thing was, they could have, they bid the six seventy-two versus the one forty per cat.
Right, they made the eight seventy-two and they bid the seven seventy-two.
Seven.
And it didn't beat the weight and horsepower, but now I talked to the salesman. He said he's going to bid the eight seventy, but we're not there yet, so he can change his mind.
Well, last year they could have bid the eight seventy-two and still been lower than now.
That was weird. It was like he just tried to convince us that we were wrong.
I just, I just don't want to sit through half an hour and forty-five minutes and then get mad at each other again.
I get it, and, and I don't understand why they were trying to sell us something we didn't want.
Thing of it is, if you gave them the specs, it is one of the specs.
Well, it wasn't on you. I, I think their argument at the time was that the seven seventy-two matched more of the specs other than those two thing or something like that. The cats are all in part.
And quite honestly, for a summer time use, uh, it would be five, but they didn't want to sell it to us at all.
And you look.
We need that horsepower.
Hopefully they know, hopefully they learn.
Right, and I, that I'm talking to the salesman, that's what he said, like I said, we're not to that point yet. So he could change his mind.
That's their choice. That way they can make a decision. I'll move to approve what we inspect.
Been moved in second to approve the, uh, inspects for the motor graders.
So for now, we're just advertising them all, advertising to take bids.
Right.
We're taking any other action. Advertising for the paper.
Yep. Any other discussion on the advertising for bids? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries.
And also, um, you guys probably know that we put rates on the front of the, the other three machines that we have. And those rates require another hydraulic bank. And the machines, oh, two thousand fifteen machines don't have that extra hydraulic bank, but it's how these new ones will, so. I'd like to go ahead and order three more of those rates. I don't know if you guys have talked to the operators that they love. You know, if somebody's mowing their ditches and the grass comes up on, on the road, they're really nice for getting that grass off. Otherwise it falls up, that huge balls of grass.
So we have three rates on the three cat, on the three other cats right now. You want to order three more for whatever we have now?
Yep. And it won't matter much, what machine, it's just that we need that hydraulic bank.
Out of curiosity, what's that going to cost?
Well, the cost for each one is five thousand seven hundred seventy-five. So total cost for the three is seventeen thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Question I have, so you said John Deere and Cat will all work on either one?
Yes, they will.
Oh, could I hate to buy something for the cat?
The whole doctor are plow hookups and it's just a matter of hooking up with the dogs. The hitch will go right on the word of plow.
And words, so that they can maybe be your bike.
Yeah, exactly.
I'll make, uh, I'll make a motion to allow me to order that.
Second.
Motion in a second to go ahead and order the, uh, three additional rates for the motor graders. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, sing about the same eye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries.
And, uh, put the ad in the paper for mowing road ditches. I just sent a copy of exactly what we did last year. The only thing that changes, who makes the motion and who seconds it? Um, if you remember years and years ago, we asked the council association, uh, what they wanted as far as how far down it has to be mowed and how tall it has to be left. And that's what we put in there in the ad. So we're kind of going way to the township, uh, association's recommendation. It should be pretty easy this year to go with. A lot of hate, but, uh, two.
Move them through. Moved in second if you approve the, put in the ad in the paper for mowing ditches. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, sing about the same eye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries.
Uh, that's all I have unless, make sure, did I misunderstand? Do we want motions on the, on the bigger bills?
Yeah, I don't know.
What was that?
Uh, motions on those bigger bills. Want to do that?
Any lungs that are included in the bill list? Yeah. I mean, if it's something exceptional, like what we're paying for payment or something like that, I think it's good to have a separate motion. But if it's, if it's a normal monthly bill or something, we aren't going to buy it. I don't have a problem with it, but I think we put the minutes, number of years ago, not limit.
Was it?
Yes. Candy would cost us. We could change that in the next week or two. So we'd be sure. Hopefully it still would have to be in the ad to give them the commission before they can.
Right.
That's, that's, that's correct. That's what we always done, I don't always do it in the past, but.
You have to go back a few years, Larry.
Two, it's like two thousand.
They were.
Five hundred.
I think I remember it went from one thousand to two thousand at that point.
Yeah, that's correct.
Let's get that out of there.
But, but didn't, didn't we already?
Well, let's just get it up.
Right. Did we already approve, can you purchase any?
Yeah, motion's made to purchase.
Yeah.
Motion made to purchase.
So this is just we want to pay it.
Yeah. Which they're out of sales.
Okay. Hey, that's all I have. It is, it pretty much only will be running that. Yeah, exactly. The bid opening for the bridge, box cover, I guess, the bridge replacement will be in March now instead of February. You know, it's got poaches. And if it was a bridge, they want to get it built in winter, so they can do the channel work behind the times. Instead of years or the above. But the box cover, they wouldn't start it naturally. And then the paid project will still be there.
Well, yeah. Thank you. Anybody else for any questions for Kevin? Thank you so much.
Can you wait a minute for me to start this hearing?
Yeah.
Curiosity. Guys, let's see, I'm about a horse real quick.
Take a two minute, three minute recess. And, uh, we'll start off with the hearing on the closing of the section line. I think we're. All right, we'll open up the, uh, hearing for the closing of the section line. There's a petition to, uh, close a section line in, uh, Grand Herbert Township. We have a couple of petitioners here, uh, Scott Nissa Hawley. Thank you so much for coming in. They kind of brought this up, if you can see it on the, uh, screen, that, and right at the end of the, the road there, they have a, there's a subdivision that goes to the south. And then there's property homeowners on the north side. If the subdivision would have been the entire area, that section line probably would have been vacated at the time the section line was done. Uh, I don't think the section line's ever been through. If you kind of go over to the lake side of it, um, that is Six Mile Bay. That's on the north side of highway nineteen. And you can see how it kind of follows the survey line across the lake and merges in with North Florida Highway nineteen. As it heads, heads west, but, um, so that's a subdivision that they're located in, the Holly's are the first house on the south side of the section line. And the other signer of the petition, the John Paul, is it John Henry? And Paul Henry, and, uh, Deborah Howell. On the north side of that, and then they have the, all the neighbors that live along there, all sign off on that. Agreeing to these, closing of the section line, they had a, even with the township. And the township, uh, agreed and recommended, they're gonna commission that, keep going, add that approval request or. What was it out? Something that we don't ever like doing. Is it the permanence of it?
The section line in part itself, where is it?
Right, right, it's east and west, right there.
So we're not, this, just for clarification, we're not discussing closing the section line where forty-nine is.
Right.
Just in between the two lots?
Just from that.
The extension of forty-nine is really, right, got it.
There is a road going east?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, that, that goes all the way east, um, what is it, seventy-nine?
Right, yeah, the one, oh, oh.
Goes east, uh.
Where does it, it connects back, that's it, right, that ties back down.
And then it continues, continues to the, uh, east.
Just for that, so you're just closing it from right here? Here basically, is that what you guys are asking for? My question is, closing that, where does the land go back to? Once we say, yep, that's good to go, who are you responsible for taking care of? It, it reverts to the adjacent property? Center, field center. So I'm just looking at the future sort of, someone's not moving back, so if anyone wants to take care of it.
Right. And Bev, would that have to be recorded then with your, um, properties descriptions, correct? So, in that way, it would allow the, the both adjacent property owners wishing to add on their properties, they could go ahead and use so, without infringing on that thirty-three foot easement of the section line now. It's never, never been used as a, as a road or an access, it doesn't provide lake access now, it's not denying anybody any, any access to water in any way, there's other access points along the shoreline that would allow people to publicly access the shoreline. And there's a very strict drop off into the lake, so, um, I went out there and took a look at it, I thought it looked like a pretty reasonable request. Especially since it's never been used and it follows one of those guidelines of within the past ten years. Been a lot longer than that. Uh, talking to some old guys out there in that neighborhood, they, they don't ever recall that going across.
Well, I would assume there must have always been water past that point, because otherwise it would have been some heated land up there underwater.
There always has been water.
There hasn't always been water, so what? So it was, it was, what, state underneath them, basically, that area? So, yeah, there's never been any room.
Kevin, is the next section line to the north touch, uh, Six Mile Bay, I'm curious.
I want to see what you're saying.
Yeah, I'll learn. Yeah.
That goes to Jeff Henry today.
That, uh, that section line has not been vacated, is that correct? An imagined that would be?
No.
That's the next road that comes from the east that goes in.
Yes.
Fifty.
Yeah, there's a deep, deep draw here, there's no way that it's ever gonna help us. I think you go another mile, or that's where the Dian Bridge used to be, but that's where we're gonna cross.
I think the dash line on the east side of the bay there is the, the area lines, probably two.
That line.
Yeah. So there's no lots underwater?
Yeah, yeah.
Ahead of it.
There's never been any lots steed or sold or anything. In the past, has there been fishermen trying to access this section line to get into the lake? Nobody's ever tried that.
Such a steep drop off. It would be really, really tough to do so.
Full of rocks. There's rocks.
Serious, I guess.
You wouldn't be able to drive over.
And then there's nowhere for them to park their trailer?
Maybe on our property.
I'll make a motion, go ahead with this. Second, uh, and then for discussion, the township did absorb, remember, Mary, was the, make sure I got it right?
Any public comment or concerns?
Who's planning that subdivision? That goes through the township before, or is that already made?
Hey, it would have, it's a subdivision, the subdivision started at where, uh, Scott and Lisa's, right? Property is, moves to the south. Had we gone both sides of that section line, it would have been made, made here, and the subdivision was free.
It was, it's East Bill, it's two subdivisions, and just had over, on the, seven subdivisions, I shouldn't say overlook, it just wasn't done.
Any further discussion on the closing of the section line?
Just keeping that century code again, just for a refresher. Somebody don't have a business on the, pre-written century code, so it makes more sense. But the, the portion of the century code that pertains to the closing of section lines, all the stipulations, at least under the premise of this requirement, so not used in ten years, not traveled due to natural obstacle or difficulty, terrain, not required due to, uh, readily accessible, for routes to travel, and the other last one is inter-schipped by interstate highway, which doesn't have any. I mean, it's all stipulation. That's always the question that we, at least since I'm on the commission, that we've always asked, is it doesn't stop you from getting to somebody else's land in size? And that's an excellent problem, that's a, it's a, it's a problem.
I think this is a good one, I mean, we have, yeah, most of the time, there are current situation.
Any further discussion? Yeah, no further discussion, um, all those in favor, could you mark the same eye?
Aye.
Both same side? Motion carries? Section, the section line is, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, what is our responsibility as far as the, the?
Resurvey?
Resurvey, did we pay for that?
This is a little question.
I believe, the recorder's office can answer those questions.
Okay, thank you very much.
You'll have to get it. Retain, and then I think it gets added to each of your guys' fee. Yep, and that will cost something, because it will have to be done at the recorder's office, you'll have to pay something for that. It won't be automatic. Just so you guys are aware of that. And both sides will have to do it.
Uh, thi- this one was a little different from ones we've done in the past, it's always come through an attorney's office. And so that's why it was, it, it's been a little cumbersome, they worked with Scott and Lisa for, that's, that's months now, and, and so, but I think all the guys are dotted and the T's are crossed and feel comfortable with their decision to do this. Yeah, thank you guys for the time, you're great to do it. All right. Jerk Nelson.
Morning.
Good morning.
The record will close in a very right.
Yes, yeah, sorry. Uh, you're right, you're right close. Uh, Stephen, come and talk to me about, uh, the ability to use some of the COVID dollars that we have on hand, uh, that we received for first responders' salaries, uh, for this past year, and for purchasing of a new draw for his office and replacing his, uh, sidearms for, uh, his office. And basically what they're doing is they're switching, uh, calibers on their sidearms to better accommodate, uh, availability of bullets. Bullets for the forties that they currently have, that has been in very short supply, very expensive. And, uh, they feel comfortable going to the nine millimeters, uh, shells are, bullets are readily accessible or more accessible and at a lesser cost, so in the long run, it saved, saved his department, they're earning some, some funds. But that, Jerk Nelson.
You've got a sidearm on for, okay, so basically it's, we called last week to get ammo for, and they're a year out for forty caliber. Oh, yeah. Uh, he said that's been the case for the last year or so, and he said it's gonna be the case for very long future, as far as he can tell, as far as our supplier. I don't know why, uh, so then we asked about nine millimeter, thirty days. Uh, and he said that's been very easy for him to come by with, to get a hold of, uh, and it's about two thirds the cost of forty ammo. So, you know, what we, if we would order rounds, I'd say, right now, we, we had a whole bunch of ammo down there, just in case, uh, but three thousand rounds is like eight hundred bucks. The same amount of ammo in forty caliber was over almost twelve hundred. So you can see, just as, as of last week, so it's about a third, two thirds of the cost of what would be. Also, the police department has just, just taken to nine millimeters, and I feel it's very appropriate for us to kind of follow suit, simply because we work so closely together, if anything were to happen, um, we can help each other out with resupplying or whatever, and it's not a different. Not going to, that never happens, it never has yet, but there is something to say about that. They need help, or you can just wheel up and help them.
So what, what, what happens to the?
So, yeah, I was gonna get to that, so basically, I don't have, I, I checked this morning again, I don't have a code on paper, but the code I got is four seven, four hundred seventy dollars per weapon. And they will allow us two hundred fifty dollars each for our guns to trade in. So, in a nutshell, we basically have to pay for the whole three, uh, weapons, and then they'll give us back what are for trade in, something to trade in. Right back to that same gear sold.
So then it's a?
Initially, we have to spend about six thousand dollars.
Buying the bolsters and all that?
We don't have, we're buying the same weapons, it's just a different caliber. So we don't have to re-bolster, we don't have to do anything other than change the weapons, and, uh, you know, that's it. And ammo, basically, is all we, and that was kind of my key, I don't want to have to buy all the bolsters, all new, you know, so we can get the same gun frame, maybe just in a different caliber, so I have to reimburse them, we're gonna pay about three thousand. Just a little over three thousand.
That's what it costs?
That was, and then the, that's what it will cost, it's gonna cost about six first, then we should get about twenty-seven, fifty, twenty-eight hundred back, uh, when we move trade in. It's pretty reasonable. It is, and that's kind of why I thought, well, these are things that are very hard to budget for on any given time, and they, they, they're very, and I thought, well, we have a little bit of time, a little bit of extra available at this point, and it's not a huge investment, as far as I'm concerned. And we'll, we can get, and I'll get exact numbers, and then we'll make sure it doesn't, you know, I'll keep a touch of candy, make sure we keep the exacts.
So you want to just use three dollars or six dollars?
Well, we, yeah, we need to use six right now.
We're gonna put three back if, well.
And then whatever the auditor and the trader have to do, put it back, once we get that money back. It'll just go back wherever they decide to put it.
And then about the drone?
Okay, uh, the drone, because when we started this project, when it was the five agencies, it was, we were just gonna put in a little bit and keep buying, but wow, we had some issues with having a universal drone. As you know, somebody used it the last time, and it was, uh, almost destroyed. They had a power line or something, uh, and became the issue of who's gonna fix it. And that kind of became a hot topic, uh, as far as insurance, who's got coverage, and whatever, anyway. We have found that when we had access to that, it's a very valuable tool for us to use. Uh, I mean, our department has used it twice. Uh, one was a possible suicidal subject in a car that was over a hill that we couldn't see. We ended up using, uh, words and managers drone, and sent the drone over the hill, because we couldn't see with our own, so we sent the drone over, but you can see exactly what he was doing, what he was, where he was at, what he was spending, pending, what he, if he had a weapon or not, very good.
What's the cost?
I have the, great dollars, but it's, the one we're looking at is thirteen thousand ninety-nine dollars. And that's better than the one that, that we currently share with the PD, the fire department. And, uh, what they're gonna say, the goal is that we're gonna, each department's gonna get their own eventually, but that is kind of, real fires involved, search and rescue's involved. Uh, this one, I would like to see your mark for the Sheriff's Office's search and rescue.
What's availability?
Thirty days, maybe?
Right, sure.
Thirty days or less?
Yeah, it, it, those aren't very, uh.
Whenever you make the ordering.
Well, yeah, we, you know, we've got to go through the steps first, before we order, gosh, so. But, like I said, these are very, these are very hard things to budget for, so if you put it in your, in your budget, it's not hard to, you know, to keep that, these kind of things from happening. So I thought we had the opportunity, so let's go see what we do it now.
And right now you have people in our qualifying, certifying.
Yes, we have a lot, eight, and we're working on more, between the different departments, so. Well, it's kind of the, it's kind of the, okay, so if, if we have a situation, I need somebody else to fly it, because we're all going to be busy. Our search and rescue needs is probably be one of us to fly it, because they're all going to be busy, you know? The fire department needs it, it's truly hierarchical and running, because they're all going to be busy, that's kind of what I had for the one.
I can see how it could be really valuable, especially search and rescue wise, because you're looking, you're trying to cover a large slot scenario.
For example, we have, for example, last, what, two, so we still had the jet seaters that had the problem with both the bay, and also become dark, and they couldn't find it. They didn't come back, so it was what, six sixteen year old, three sixteen year old, I believe it was. Well, we ended up, you know, the drone was broken, uh, but that could have saved some time off, because we could have sent people the other side. Just did a big sweep, because it does have infrared or, or solar. Uh, so those are, I mean, those are things that I think are important for us to have access to, something like this, it's the technology there. And we do have, have the filings that are available to do it.
And this is, this is all coming out of the COVID reimbursement dollars?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve first, about, for, what is that, twenty-two thousand dollars?
Uh, about right, nineteen, nineteen, nineteen-ish thousand dollars would get reimbursed. Unless you want to throw a little bit in there for some ammo, which will help, at least initially.
Is that thirteen thousand ninety-nine, is that, uh, includes an extra battery or?
This one has four batteries with it.
Four batteries.
So we're actually upgrading, so right now, the one we have has two, and it's good for about twenty-eight minutes or twenty-nine minutes, something like that.
When they were branded.
When they were branded, uh, this one comes with four, so it'll instead. There are so many.
I do have a question. I do have a question on some stuff, what's gonna happen with all the ammo that you have, are we gonna trade that too?
We don't have a whole lot. Yeah, that's why we're trying to order, and that's what kind of facilitates this, we have enough to finish up this year.
Let those secrets out.
We have, we have enough to finish up this year for fall, nine, because the weapons currently time keeps out, before we get them, get them ordered today.
To the burn.
So we, we still have fall, I got this year, we, we have, so we're, we're up. We don't, I don't have a whole lot of stockpile, because I don't like it, they get old, so I only like it. So I only like to have enough just to get it by. So I don't have ten or fifteen pallets around, so that'll be about enough for this year.
I didn't ask a question.
Oh, that's, that's a good question to ask.
Otherwise, that's sitting, and then what do we do with it?
Then what do we do with it? Well, we can sell it. Anyway. You're good?
So we have a motion and a second to go ahead and, uh, fill all the shirts before the, the, uh, sidearm replacements, along with, I would assume some ammunition along with those. And the drone utilizing the, uh, COVID dollars that we have remained in the law enforcement first responder reimbursement. Any further discussion?
As long as I wish this.
Not yet.
If not, all those in papers, signify with a say a no.
Aye.
The board will say a sign. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
We have a bill for the paying for the, uh, radar.
Yeah, they got brought away, sorry. We got the new car ones in, we don't have the, uh, the other ones yet, but they're coming.
The total bill, total invoice, twenty-one thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars.
So, will we get it signed for?
Yep.
Right on the line.
That's one part that's, I'm gonna have to press it.
Well, that's, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure that next came in more, because I said what?
Motion and a second to approve the payment, there was a, uh, radar assistance. Need a roll call for that?
Uh, yes, please.
Roll call?
Call.
Aye.
Wake field.
Aye.
Light line.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Crit.
All right.
Pretty sure they're on pretty close or nothing like. Both the base for the radar system, that you can go pick me up later.
Yes.
Right. That makes a lot of sense.
Hey, everybody, where are those fees going?
They go to the state.
They go to the state, that's a good.
After you take that, you go up to an educated kid.
School, trust.
That's why I'm so charitable.
That's right.
He stays easy.
All right. Any other old business? If not, uh, moving into new business, approval of beer liquor license transfer, that'd be shot.
It's sold?
It's, it's not sold yet, we're trying to get a little bit ahead of the wall on, getting a liquor license from the state. So I'm already getting a liquor license from the state, they're like, they said six to eight weeks. But they won't do anything until we get county approval. So we're looking at, uh, probably a purchase date of mid-October, maybe November, it just kind of depends on when liquor license is ready with the state, then we're gonna go ahead and sign the the purchase.
Who's it flying?
Uh, it's Mark Dry. Is it Bone Brey Enterprises, is that?
Bone Brey Enterprises.
Bone Brey? Enterprises, uh, three different individuals that are are going through a purchase on that. I believe that are listed on the application. Did the liquor and beer license. Everything looked ready and complete.
I just want to hear correct.
Yeah. Leadership has approved.
Level transfer.
Only the Washington.
The transfer.
Motion and a second to go ahead with the approval of the transfer for its watergate and liquor establishment. Any further discussion? If not, all those in papers, signify with a say a no.
Aye.
Board will say a sign. Motion approved. Congratulations.
All right, thank you. Thanks for your time.
I see you have two guys.
I'll give the license to the, uh, this team.
Yeah, and then we'll.
Probably do it today.
Okay.
So visitors delegation, any visitors? Um, gentlemen, that we?
Take the video off.
And no visitors? No, uh, others? We brought on both portfolios, Sarah, Sarah, for, uh, permission light.
Well, I don't have a whole lot, Sarah was in. Obviously, the timeline for twenty-eight would sound pretty long, so we'll just wait. Um, so, uh, the state's training a little while, because it's still things we're doing, but most of the time, no news is good. For Devil's Lake, we haven't been, you know, quite a while, simply because of other reasons that our directors had to go to, so I think we're just gonna be, um, say, believe. Social services last month was nothing too exciting. Still considered indirect cost, but nothing too crazy, just, um, shape up. There has been some discussion in, uh, there's an interim committee for the state legislature, legislative meeting, I can't remember what the interim committee's called, but essentially they're looking at pay equity things quickly in the social service districts. Because they're quickly, uh, realizing that, which is surprising, I wouldn't think, that people are getting different benefits in different places. Which, when you go to the county system, and every different county is different, you're gonna have different issues. But they're talking about, they're looking at pay disparities as well, even though that's a statewide system, simply because they have, they have a lot of compression issues and things like that. Trouble retaining people, so they're looking at that in the interim, what they can do going forward, so it's interesting. Representative Wesley Mount, our board, uh, has been, I believe he's sitting on that committee, so it's good to hear what's, what he ended up to be back here and there. Coming out of Florida, nothing too crazy there, just try to, uh, there's a bunch of hot documents that our, our directors report, I'm trying to get that, I don't know. They're always, it's like every time you think like you're ahead in that business, then hot dates another, it's just like, I'm saying. So we're having to keep up all things, other things we won't, we're looking at there. Uh, library board, I don't know if I got a quote of library board last night, I was, we talked about the, I think I had an appointment. Interesting. Nothing too crazy, I don't think, but, uh, just, it seems like it's gonna be a little word to be out, so you're learning, learning what's happening, things like that. The one thing I did, I know that I mentioned it at the last meeting, uh, was, and I'm sure Lucas knows this as well, um, basically, to move from, I can't remember the different terminologies, but is it future focused?
Future focused, highest.
That's the highest one, we're at a level below, but to get to future focus, we're really not that far.
Right.
It's basically some additional programming opportunities for youth as well as, as, uh, the adult population, but if they can get those additional opportunities, which if we get that funding for additional staff, those additional opportunities should be easy to, uh, ascertain, to, to, to handle. Then we'll be future focused, and then we get some increased funding as well as some, some additional things that go with that, so hopefully that's something, that's one of the goals for the next year. We're talking about goal planning, things like that, so.
That's good, yeah, I mean, I've, part of the problem that really kept us from getting there was we don't want stability of director for years, right? I mean, it was like, by the time they had their feet under them, they were on their way back out. So, yeah, because we went through.
Oh, like through what, three years?
While I was the director, and I promise, I promise I was.
Well, Jim, Jim was for years, and then we went through. Well, we had the one director, she was very good, but then she, her family moved in.
Yeah, and then the, the next guy was great, but he was fresh out of.
And he was the largest team.
Yeah, and he basically, he basically just traded up into a much larger, more, you know, higher paid library, so I mean, that was normal. I do think that, that Ignacio does a really good job, so.
But it seems it's always gonna be positive, it's just a matter of, uh, you know, as, I think it's with anything, if you don't have staff getting programmed and done, the way they need to do it is difficult, so if we can, if they can afford more staff, and be able to get more programming done, and more programming's kind of the point of having a library is, uh, providing services, trying to see if people can, uh, can, can utilize the facility. I think the only other thing I wanted to bring up, this number of portfolio issue, which is something that you want for all of us, I think, going forward is, uh, in looking at the fund balances, we got, what, the first half of the second COVID funds, the one point one million, one point one eight million. Has there been any, uh, guidance yet on if we can use that on highway funding, did that get it? Because that whole, that whole thing, the infrastructure spending bill hasn't passed both ways, so, uh, because it hasn't gone through the house yet, but just something to think about, I think, going forward as a commission. You know, obviously we put in, we don't have our budget finalized for next year, but we put in a three percent raise. And then the cost of lit, or the three percent cost of living and the step phone. I, I think it's looking like they're gonna be looking at about a five to six percent cost of living adjustment. I think they're looking at your social security. So we're even at three percent, which I figured at the time was pretty aggressive, we're gonna be behind. I'm not saying that we, that we, uh, that we change that number because we can't, but those COVID funds are going to be available to do a, uh, performance bonus, and the state has used some of those funds for a performance bonus. I think it would be at least something to look at from the county perspective, but maybe saying, hey, let's get our performance bonus off our employees, because this last year's been tough. And, and, I mean, we've got the funds, we've got the ability to do so, maybe it would be good to take care of our, of our employees and give them a little bit of a thank you bonus and, and, you know, it's something we don't have the opportunity to do very often. So if we have a chance to do it, why don't we try to structure something and maybe look at it?
If you have a chance.
If we have a chance, and I think we can use those other COVID funds for anything we want, we're still sitting on minus the, what we just spent, about four hundred thousand dollars too. I'm not saying we go crazy, but I'm saying that, you know, I think a little bonus, uh, especially I, I know the, the state, uh, uh, human services department did one, and our social services, I don't believe, did receive one, even though they're kind of under the same umbrella, so I think it would be beneficial if we looked at the whole county and said, hey, what would make sense for a bonus, and maybe use a few dollars in that, so. Just something to think of going forward.
Have we heard anything on one of the salary funds, on what we can spend it for, or the tag tables?
Uh, yeah. Cause the questions went out there, but nobody's answered. Yeah, and I, I think the, uh, the motion was made, correct, and passed in that infrastructure bill, but it still hasn't gone through the house yet, so if it's all, they finish all the budget portion, who knows how long that's gonna take, but. If the infrastructure bill passes, then likely gonna get a no answer on that. Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, so we don't know exactly how it's gonna march yet, but I, I just, just, I just figured I'd bring it up, just something that's been rambling around in my mind, just because there has been, the state has started to do that, and, and I think, you know, we have the dollars to do it, and it doesn't act like it's, not gonna be huge, but something to maybe make up that difference between the cost of living that we're gonna be doing next year, or things like that, so just, just a thought. Roll it around in your head, and then we could figure out a way, maybe we can make it function. Just a thought, I think that's all there. And, uh, the former Devil's Lake company, or really? Uh, I don't think we've ever had a meeting. Just, uh, well, yeah, just, let me think here now.
Hold on.
Yes, I'm trying to remember if there was interest by it on, other than not. I would have to look. I know we did discuss it, but I don't recall if they ever brought a formal interest by it on, I know that he was working with him, but I don't know if we ever approved a formal.
I think Brad's worked with him on some, uh, who wants, uh, state people work.
Correct, yeah. I know he was helping him do the basement or the toto things and things like that, or all of the different paperwork to do the primary sector and all that, so.
That's where I was thinking. Think so.
Yeah, I don't think we've ever approved a formal interest by it on pace type loan setup, but I, I would have to wish that.
You heard it, Kevin?
I just had a question, some reply, I don't know. Are they just making things up there, or what do they? Build all their, uh. Sorry, man. At some point, he's gonna start manufacturing vessels, COVID vessels. Oh, he's putting out a full facility. The one thing too to look into is there are differences in, when you ask for like property tax payment, I don't know if you can do both things. So maybe you look at both, I don't, I have to look at them again.
I don't know.
I, I can't recall, but there's stipulations on all of those case loans, I know we've never done. Yeah, so I, I'd have to double check where I can. So, yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Wolk?
I guess, earlier you were asking about the with the treasurer, I'll talk at least about the stuff put in the room to get that. And I've talked about her portion for that. She brought it to order here, have that taken care of. And then the fair board, we're still talking, like, put some bits together and stuff, with the homecoming now, and we put them in the building instead of buying some tents, because it for each side of the houses, we'll get to do like tents, instead of spending thousands of dollars. But they should have something put together, hopefully this next meeting here, next three, four months. We haven't had a meeting for a while. Other than that, I don't know.
Mr. Brown?
Uh, the DOC, Steve Hall from the DOC, was up in jail for three, four days. It went quite well after the gold, uh, loss, on the Thursday, on Thursday, I guess, and went pretty well. Sure going, there's a lot of things that need to be improved on. Uh, they had a full staff two weeks ago, and now they're down to four. And that was the move that day, and I that's not acceptable. I haven't visited with him since then. We had a couple of apps, we had a couple of apps.
Question you had before, you know, on wages, so are they finding help, like, part of, maybe this is a question. Where are their staffs going, or do they do a better job, or just?
They had some, earlier, I know there were some that went to, you know, better schedules, you know, they could do the nights, or do the weekend. I think that's one of the big drop apps. The money for our, I think, is very competitive, but, you know, conditions, the work schedule, something like that, I guess. Really gonna have to change our whole thinking out there, and I'd have to hell of a time getting that done. I mean, I don't know why you don't take care of it, like, we're in the county shop. We were short people in the county shop who would address it. I mean, this is a political subdivision. We need to address it that way. They look, oh, I can't get through their head.
Or, you know, the people.
Not a business.
The, the individual, they're working these odd hours, so maybe there has to be something benefit to send up.
Yeah, may, may have some type of differential table, you work nights or weekends, so you get an extra couple of dollars or something on top, I mean, to try to incentivize it.
But I don't, I would, so it was always, send it up three women at night, to try to persuade that person, this is a good thing, you know, maybe you got something to be looking at.
And I, 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 just a question you'll put to you, so we lost four, so was it a matter of, and I don't know what you can't say and can't say, but was it new people that then they, or was it people we had previously? But they, they came in, they decided it wasn't a problem situation, and, I mean, I think there's, yeah, I take, yeah, I think there's gonna be that kind of turnover regardless. For point two, because you think, oh, I can do this, and you get in and you do it, you just realize this is not working. But, you know, fortunately, we have to continue to keep recruiting them the whole time, because you know you're gonna have some turnover.
And the female end of it, if you just have real difficult time, you'd be in the apps. On the plus side, they've got all their policy manual put together, and it's in place. Steve was a big help on that, I think, to make sure that he was part of it, to, gotta take care of, so that's good. With labor situation, you're just, we're gonna have to address it more, I don't know how other help the wages, and try to attract better people. More qualified people, maybe I should say that.
The other part that goes along with the, the correctional officers is, um, you have to, they have to be trained, and so that training has to take place within the first year of employment. And, and, um, we don't have a local training facility or, uh, instructor in-house, so we're ending up having to send our correctional officers out of town in order to receive. So we're ending up having to send our correctional officers out of town in order to receive that. It's a three week correctional officer basic, is what they call it. And, you know, so that's a, a lot of time away from home. And, and so, Mr. Brown, myself, others at the law enforcement center board. But, well, let's approach the college and see if they can somehow incorporate that type of curriculum, either into their police officer training course, or have it as a separate course that's offered periodically. And so we're going to have a meeting out there Thursday morning, Mr. Brown, myself, some of the representatives from the college and our state representatives, have been invited to come and see if the state can provide some, some help with that. Because bigger communities, they have those people in place. They can do their training. Okay, you're hired, you gotta go to this class, this is when this class starts. Hey, and you're learning all about being a correctional officer. And we just don't have that opportunity here, so.
Fargo and Bismarck, that's cool. We just got sent in there, put in their office. It's a big roster and you're paying expenses down there. And I thought it was the most partner with, you know, college. Two years ago, they tried to do it, the college denied it because of the not a moneymaker form. Well, at the meeting, our last board meeting of the law enforcement center board, I said, well, I know Ramsey County would be interested in involving ourselves with the college to support that program. Because Ramsey County is going to be in prison business for a long, long time. We're not getting on it. So why not educate our own people in our own local, let's, let's get it done and do it. I think Rugby would use us. I think Walsh County would use us.
Roll it.
Like I said, the schools are in Bismarck and Fargo, and they fill up, you know.
Is, is, is it a, so the, the ones that are rugby in Fargo, or Bismarck and Fargo, then they run full all year? I think just three week sessions now. So, so what, I mean, I obviously, I think the college is a good, good place to start, hopefully with the network. But if that doesn't work, is it, is it a situation where we can, we can pay to have the trainers from Bismarck or Fargo come to do the three week course here?
They've tried that in the past and they're very lucky for each.
Yeah, well, I'm sure, it's like anything, if, if they, if they can get full classes in both those places, why would you go on the road, you know? But I'm just saying, I mean, maybe we can make it worth their time or something. Because to me, it makes a lot more sense, even if we had to pay way more than it costs to send our people there on the training portion of it. Makes more sense to have one or however many people come to do the training, come here than send. Or snap someplace, can't we send them training, girl? Someone to get trained, become a trainer.
I don't know all the specifics for that, but I mean, yes, I think that's a possibility, but.
I mean, if we don't have the one cost where this individual is trained.
Rugby, they did their own assessment on their own facility and they cut, they cut their population back. Because they were finding to train people, they didn't say rugby, train them. So they just did it themselves on their own. They didn't wait for the ELC. I, I either do a great flying at the ELC, it's not going to happen too hard. They volunteered to do that, and they're being corrected.
Is it, is it possible you guys could talk to Rob and see what it's costing the law enforcement center to send people to train? I'm sure they got a line item. See what it's costing, because I mean, if it, if it makes sense, like you said, why wouldn't we maybe pay for a portion of it at the college? And, and just write them a check every year and make sure we got, we have, we've got a training facility here, so we don't have to screw up it anymore. That would be the reason.
Well, I mean, ultimately we'll pay for it anyway, so may as well have local jobs and all that stuff.
I mean, it would cost us X amount of dollars, I mean, because I don't know how many trainers you have to have or how much a facility's costing. To me, it, I think we're talking about, we, maybe, yeah. But at that point, like you said, if we can invest on the front end, we have it here just for us and anybody else that wants to use it, fantastic. That's just, you know, that's just an offset to the cost.
Well, and, and maybe if they're, if they're trained sooner within that, that position, they're more likely to stick around. And, and be able to do their job a little more better, a little more efficiently. Have all the training requirements that have been met. You know, and, you know, yeah, maybe bringing these outside trainers in, whether it be for a, a day, you know, part of that curriculum, that's built into it, that may be an option too. But I think seeing how the people train right here would be a win-win for everybody. And, you know, I think when, last time we approached the college, we were approaching about implementing this training, I think Department of Corrections was still offering that at a state level. Like they had since abandoned that program, left it up to the bigger entities to go ahead and, and do it themselves. And then the smaller ones were going to fend for themselves.
Yeah, you're, you're basically left, and that's a factor without.
So I, I think it could be a win-win if we can work something over to college. And, you know, we can come back with the, to the commission next time with, with some, with some cost that it would cost.
Now, we talked about it in our last board meeting. And, you know, we probably, I did, I spoke a little bit, I thought I could sell a few three. But as I said, Ramsey County is going to be in prison business for a long time. There's no question about it. So let's get some people trained, so we can run that law enforcement center efficiently and effectively.
I, I think it's kind of crazy that they allow a year of training. Then it's not a shorter time frame than that, like you have to, you can be hired within the first 90 days or six months or something like that. You have to have like training. To me, it's a, it's a pretty, I don't, like I said, I don't know what the total investment is, but it doesn't matter what the total investment is at the end of the day to avoid, I mean, you have to have the people trained, you have to be able to do their job well. And if you don't pay to train correctly, it's a liability issue. So whatever it takes to get it done with it, you know, reasonably, I think, makes a lot of sense.
You know, and, and maybe people that might have an interest in pursuing a career and that can, can take the course and then be reimbursed once they're hired.
Yeah.
If they have the training. You know, there are a lot of different options in it, but I, I think, I think it'd be a win-win for both entities. And if we can make it work, if it happens, college and the career.
I can't believe that, you know, I do hire you out there and they got to look at one course for three weeks or three different weeks or whatever. And be away from their family, their roots, you know. It's very appetizing anyway, absolutely not. Maybe make it more handy more, more available. And accounts cost a lot, I don't think. I think it would win them all.
Great. Anything else? Commissioner Wakefield?
To add to that, this is sort of more of a just public interest thing. Apparently CHI got a call from the state health department yesterday saying there are no hospital beds available anywhere in the state and people are just going to die if they're going to die. They're kind of pretty much in those words. So, things are quite, quite a bit worse than they probably feel like. And I've been having discussions with people where I said, you know, the problem is there's no political will left to do anything. I'm not asking this board to do anything, I just felt like you guys should know. From what I'm hearing, it sounds, it sounds like the whole hospital's on the teetering on the verge of collapse, with the number of patients they have, they may have staff, nurses, you know, coming down with staff. I know, I have to complete what I work on, I have to complete it too. Not that they're not bed centers, they don't have staff, we could get a little bed.
Well, sure, but you can never really.
Functionally, it's the same kind of thing as with Patrick, you don't have to.
Well, the problem is that they were relying on travel nurses, they make a lot of building in. There's so many surgeons everywhere that you can't even get travel nurses anymore. Doesn't matter, you could get a thousand bucks an hour, you're not going to get them. Because they're already themselves. There's, there's X amount of nurses and doctors in the United States. When they're someplace else, you can leave it so that he's.
Don't get sick right now. It's a long, short ride. Other than that, here from the sheriff, um, I don't know that I have anything else that's top of mind to mention. Uh, the heritage center, they had the city come over because they were having drainage problems in the basement. Uh, and, and in the process of cleaning that out, they also managed to clean out some of the roof drain. And it turns out that there was blockage about halfway down that drain, which may have been part of the reason that we get roof leaks. So all that is fixed now, just so that everybody's aware, but it was quite a process for a couple of days. Also vandalism on the outside. Uh, and in passing, I'd like to mention, I think this would be potentially something that we could look at. I believe that it should really be the city's responsibility, but we have real estate downtown too and the county does. I think what should probably be done is the city and county should invest in a CTV camera system for the alleyways in, in downtown. Because, and then put all of the, the hub for that at the law enforcement center, because this, this vandalism problem is getting pretty terrible. And, and constant, and, um, I, I just, I don't think that it's acceptable. Speaking anecdotally, I have lived downtown now for four years. And people told me from the outset, well, I don't like being downtown after dark, just to say. I can confirm now for the first time that I, I've started to feel that also. It, you know, downtown has taken on a totally different tone and tenor right now than it ever had before. So I think that would be a conversation worth having. I think that you get almost all of the business, I mean, especially if you didn't have to pay for it, obviously. But a- almost all of the business owners downtown would be glad to use their buildings as an anchor for cameras, knowing that it was all being fed to the law enforcement center. And that's a way to make resources go further, because DLBD basically has to station at least one squad car in downtown at all times, every night. I mean, that's just, because that's where a lot of the activity is. So that's been something that I've been bouncing around in my head for quite a while. I figured I'd just put it out there, get you guys' thoughts on it. If there's some way that the county contributes to that, then you're probably in favor of it. So that's it, but.
Certainly like to see the proposal come from the city and the chief of police, you know, saying this is what's needed. And this is what it's going to cost. What do you guys be willing to do? And so I, I think maybe approach Chief Ignowski and.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm, I'm willing to, but I just, something that I.
Additional lighting through those alleyways at night would be a big bonus as well, I think.
Yes, although, again, anecdotally, and it's interesting, because I'm actually in favor. I'm, gee. Yeah, I, I'm actually in favor of what was done in the streets. You know how people, I can hear, I guess I live on that corner, I mean, right over there. There are people that sit on the bench outside of my apartment and talk until two, three, everything. Generally speaking, there's no problem with that. But that uptick in the number of people that are staying outside on the streets, I think, is directly related to the increase in, in things that have been happening out on the streets. So.
Big thank you to the folks at the park board, they helped clean up that one. They made a nice little shop, you know, it was spray painted graffiti on the side of that, on the side of the old shop, was the building shop. And they were able to clean it off. Your results look good.
But I mean, there's, there's spray paint on every single one of my, my buildings that I own downtown. Remember, every single one, that maybe you can clean it, but, but, until, until you've got actual camera coverage, I don't know how you'll ever get on top of it.
It's easy to address it, it's the apartment.
City of Fargo has a good number of cameras down there, I've seen decrease in, in criminal activity, vandalism, type of things since they've installed those, do you know?
I, I haven't looked into it, so I won't make a point, but that seems like that would be an interesting thing now. So anyway, I just figured, well, I don't think, I don't think we have anything else, so.
Good, well, thank you. Appreciate that. Airport, we had our September meeting last week because our airport manager is on maternity leave. And just so happened the day that her meeting happened, she had a mom and baby car. So she missed the meeting anyway. But anyway, mom and baby are, are good and healthy and, but everything is moving along smoothly. She had everything in place before she left. And all the arrangements with our, um, our engineering firm and the next people in line in charge, taking care of some different things. We have a very short timeline in order to spend some of the COVID dollars that was received through the airport authority. And looking at the plans moving forward with the ability to maybe use some, some really much needed and valuable improvements without costing local taxpayers a lot of money. Those smaller airports, I think, got, we received that something near like the neighborhood of $16 million. Might have to be spent within certain period time and for certain, certain things. But I think that, that some of the things that run our fire plan for improvements qualify and so. Looking good. Boarding numbers are, are really good. They bounced back, and we've got an update, a new representative from the National Guard, Danger Det Nelson, took over for his chance. He, he moved and, but anyway, they said RTI training has, you know, continues to bring people in. And they, and you know, they don't have to locally book the travel for their people coming in. But anybody come in, they try to accommodate and recommend flying or getting a Delta flight. And so we want to make sure that our partnership stays very good with the National Guard and their RTI program. Bringing soldiers in from all across the country for training, as it utilizes our airport. And helps with that, so that's all I have.
Want to do it here?
So, you in the drift?